Would you please stand as Mr. Sealy leads us in the opening exercises?
Please, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, one yard, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all.
Flags of the State of New Mexico, let's see a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
We really have been fortunate, thank you for allowing us together here today for our business as we go through this meeting. Help us keep in mind what we're doing in this board. Lead, guide, and direct us towards Jesus' spirit. Jesus, send me a prayer. Amen.
Amen. Before we move to anything else, I ask the students in the back to stay and hoping they're still here so we can absolutely thank them for this foolish meal that spoiled us.
Can you guys come up here in front?
And I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
I wanted to hide. I'd like to thank Mrs. Hudson's and the Culinary Arts Department here. We are in our second year of being very active in this program and they provided a nice, very nice meal for us tonight. And so, thank you to Mrs. Hudson and our students. They are phenomenal. And you will find these kiddos in other activities as well. So, let's just do three cops and a woo. One, two, three.
It was wonderful. They spoiled us tremendously. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you guys enjoy.
Exactly. Okay. I know they were waiting to clean up and head out. So, thank you all. I will call the meeting to order. We do have a forum with all five members present. Just a quick reminder to board members, if you start to say something, make sure your light is on green. I think I'm the worst at remembering that. You don't have one?
I guess we'll share.
Okay. So, at this time, we will consider the agenda. Are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, ma'am. On item E1, it should read, "Consider addition item JJGEA as an exhibit to regulation J4161." Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, Vanessa, in a minute, you can give that. Thank you. So, I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with flexibility with the noted changes.
Submove.
Good. This time, we will have introduction of guests and we will begin right up here with Mrs. Hudson's.
Janice Hudson.
Stephanie Stevens.
Peyton Hagler.
Dr. Myers.
Bill DeRogger.
Trey Williams.
Mark Balafrus.
Justin DeRogger.
Rodney Ryan.
Christina Halt.
Q R Marcus.
Olivia Amundson.
Andy Sloan.
Today.
Coria Nellis.
Normon Mills.
Sabrina Gonzalez.
Kelly Bright.
Monya Sanchez.
Elda Ramar.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Jorge.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. All right. At this time, we do have on the agenda for public comment time, a time set aside for items on tonight's agenda. Do we have any public comment at this time? We'll ask if you're gonna public comment, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name and the topic that you're speaking on as far as where it is on tonight's agenda.
Hello. Good afternoon. Mrs. Rodriguez. Well, you all don't know me already. Can we get an update? See, y'all talked about the drop-off situation. Any updates?
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, as I've told you before during public comment, this is not a time for us to engage in responsiveness. And I know that you have that.
I came. First time, I came. Then y'all didn't want to answer. Second time, I put it on the agenda, supposedly y'all didn't answer either. So, what is it gonna take for y'all to answer your questions for the public? What is it gonna take? All we're looking for is change. That's all we're looking for. Change in the drop-off. Can you answer me this? Why did y'all take it off two years ago? Y'all had pick-up and drop-off at Lee Elementary. What's the reason of taking it off? Anybody could give me an answer? We just want answers. We want change, something that will work for the community. No? No updates? No? Okay. That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Do we have another?
My name is Elda Rodriguez Ramar. I am Mrs. White. We have our child in the elementary. We're looking for a solution for the drop-off situation. This cannot be something that is permanently established or be mandatory for parents. Every parent should have a right to be able to choose what works for them. There's mothers, single mothers, single parents that take their time to get lunch break during those hours and being able to go pick up their children as well. We were asked that we were not able to wait there, go 10 minutes before 3:00 to sign up a child. I see mothers having to feed their children in the back of the seats because they're waiting, windows covered up with blankets because of the sun. What about parents being affected economically by the gas prices, having to wait there 30 minutes or even before 3:00? What about, you know, those single mothers or teachers that have children in the school system and they have to stay there waiting before they're able to go pick up their own child at their schools? And we're, all we're asking is for you guys to listen, to put yourself in our place and in our situation. What about parents that don't have working ACs in their cars and they have to wait there? Is there something that it's, that happened there that we're not able to go? It's not a policy, safety reasons? And I understand when you guys say, "Well, safety reasons," but anyone can made a cardboard, put a name, the school logo on it. What about parents being able to go eat lunch with their children? What about grandparents being able? We need parents to be involved in the school system more than ever. And I know God put age in every one of you in this place for a time like this. We need, we need God in our school system. We need parents in our school system. We need you guys to hear us too. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay. If not, I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent. I believe she has some special guests.
And I had the opportunity to meet two amazing people, well, several amazing people in Washington, DC in January. And I wanted them to be our guests tonight. And so, they have cleared their schedules to be with us here tonight. And I want to thank Bill and Becca from Cotera Energy for being with us this evening. They are great people with big hearts. Cotera's energy generous sponsorship of Levington High School's career and technical education program embodies a true commitment to creating empowerment and workforce development. Cotera is a critical support for our oilfield pre-employment pathway, which is, I believe, we are the only ones in the state. Equips Levington students with essential skills and knowledge, paving the way for promising careers in the energy sector. By investing in the future of Levington's younger adults, Cotera not only fosters local talent, but strengthens the oil and gas industry in southeastern Mexico and west Texas. And I'm gonna invite Mr. Williams up here to say more great things about Cotera Energy and these two people.
Yes. Thank you, Bill and Becca. Love to school's partnership with Cotera highlights the importance of collaboration between businesses and educational institutions, ensuring that students are well-prepared to meet the demands and evolving workforce. Thank you, Cotera, for making love to youth future prior. I have a couple of things that I'd like to share about what Cotera's done so far with our schools. First of all, Cotera sponsored the oilfield pre-employment promotional commercial that was shot during the pilot year of OPEB Level 1 at NMJC, another one of our terrific partners. And this time, I'd like to share that video with you.
My name is Peyton Hagler. This is my second year at Levington High School and I am building an oilfield pre-employment pathway. When they hired me to do this, there's really not a lot of programs like this in the United States at the high school level. There's a lot of college programs that touch on this, that, or the other, but not a whole lot that focus on the entire industry.
Cover a lot. We cover horizontal, vertical drilling, H2S, the safety hazards. And OPEB has shown me that I could have many different career paths and I could try anything.
It's been a really interesting experience doing OPEB this year. To begin with, Mr. Hagler has been a great teacher towards me because at the beginning of this year, I wanted to drop out and he's been pushing me towards these programs and he's pushing me forward to be a better person.
I was bored in school until I got to be an eighth grader and I was able to join the FFA program at Texaco. And my ag teachers, Mr. Whitman and Mr. Pennell, gave me a reason to come to school. It was powerful. So, I just kind of looked at this as my opportunity to be that teacher for students here.
Some advice I'd give other students would be to be open-minded and to be ready to learn because there are many topics to cover in the oilfield. And it can be difficult sometimes, but in the end, it would be worth it.
Through our industry partner Cotera, we have been able to kind of explore college programs throughout the United States. Cotera basically sat down and said, "Here's what we can do and here's where we can go. There's, you know, a way that we can sit them down now and educate them if that's where they're going. Let's do it."
Here's just a few other contributions that Cotera's made that benefits Love to students. Cotera facilitated the introduction of a curriculum for our oilfield pre-employment pathway from a community college in Pennsylvania. Cotera has become an inaugural industry advisory member of our oilfield pre-employment program in 2023. Cotera funded all OPEB Level 1 bonuses, which included steel toe boots, lunches, trips to production locations, and take-home swag such as toe socks. Cotera selected our very old Mr. Peyton Hagler to serve on a committee of energy educators to meet annually and collaborate to expand and build energy education programs across the United States. Cotera sponsored a trip to Washington, DC for our superintendent, Ms. Cianas, Mr. Peyton Hagler, instructor of oilfield pre-employment program, and myself, to attend the state of the industry speech by the president of the American Petroleum Institute. Cotera has also sponsored scholarships for four Levington High School graduates to attend NMJC for free. These students participated in LHS's oilfield pre-employment pathway last year. At the NMJC, three of these students are majoring in automation and one student is working towards obtaining their CDL. Thank you, Cotera.
So, some swag.
Yes, we do. So, before we present that, Dr. Parker would like to also say something. I just need to share that a couple of years ago, I got an email from Becca. And she was like, "Hey, we have this STEM lab that we take to schools and would you be interested in?" I'm like, "Okay, really? Like, what is it? How does it work? You know, tell me more about it." So, we start this conversation. And so, I said, "You know, we had wanted to start, you know, turning things around. Ms. Q was at the high school and I said, 'Sure, let's do it at the middle school' because we talked about what would be the best fit." So, we set it up at the middle school and the middle schoolers are going through. And I said, "Peyton, I think it would be really cool..." Where is he? Find your light, right? I said, "I think it would be cool after I saw the lab if you would just come and look and see what it's about. I think it's really cool." And so, he worked it into his schedule to pop in right at the end of the day to see the lab and happened to meet Becca and Bill. Okay? Serendipity, the stars align, and they had a conversation. We're talking in the parking lot. I'm like, "Sure, we can send him to Pennsylvania. What do we need to do?" Because then they have this problem. And here we are. And without you two, and without you, and without you, and you, our program would still be just an idea of trying to, we couldn't do it without you. And so, thank you, Becca, for pushing this family. It's incredible what they've done. So, thank you.
Now, I appreciate y'all so much. It's my turn to speak, but it is, it has been an amazing opportunity to work with your school district and Peyton, get to know his students. That day was actually super fun. I think that we blew something up in the CDL lab or the welding lab. I actually think I dropped one of the Velos when we were delivering it in Levington. So, this has been really fun, but it's been even more impactful to see some of these students enter a career. Obviously, Cotera is always in the need of building up our future workforce, but if we can do it from a grassroots level and with the partnerships with school districts like Levington, I just want to say thank you so much for saying yes, for allowing Peyton to educate his OPEB students, and to you, board members, for believing and partnering with an industry partner such as us. So, thank you so much for tonight. It's been amazing. We are, this is just the beginning.
Let's not make this sound like we're big. This is just the beginning.
I saw that. It's wonderful. If you want to go back to it, share it with us.
That student that's working on his Class A CDL, by the way, has a Class A CDL.
Oh, he did!
So, that's life-changing for that young man.
These students will never forget. They will never forget the opportunity that they had in this district, but it doesn't happen without outside support. We can also, it's amazing.
You've got it. And I have to say.
Mr. Sloan, would you like to say anything? He is our CTE tosta.
Everything Dr. Parker said and more. This doesn't happen without great partners. It just doesn't. And great partners, business partners, industry partners, they'll tell us the truth when we don't have it right. And that's been really great in this market share, right Peyton? Peyton doesn't have all the answers, believe it or not, and Cotera has a lot of them. So, thank you and we look forward to much more.
Many, many more years.
Yeah, I hope so.
Mr. Hagler, do you have anything to say?
Sure. I'm gonna, this is for Mrs. Gonzalez. I recently, we had a meeting and I told everybody that I was the weakest part of the pathway. And I have since been told that that's not the right way to go about things. But what I mean to say is I have a lot of room to grow. This industry is a multi-billion dollar industry. It's got so many different avenues. And sure, I really need to stand in front of a group of kids and say, "We're gonna learn this together." But without industry partners like Cotera saying, "Here's what we can do and here's where we can go and here's the check to do it and here's a team of people to teach you how to do it and here's a group of people to tell your kids where to go and how to get there," none of it happens. It's just an idea. So, thank you, guys, because I'm, you know, like I said today at the lunch, I'm just a guy trying to teach the kids how to power our world. And I can't do that unless I have an administration and a school board and a boss that stands behind me and says, "Go get it done." And industry partners to say, "Here's how we get it." So, I'm just a guy trying to teach some kids. Forever thankful to everyone.
And we're thankful for you.
Yes.
We have a flag and a wildcat flag.
I'm adding it to our field offices.
So, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Now that we've interrupted business.
Do you feel like you'd be banned now?
I've never gotten a normal flag.
Nice. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Self, oh, oh.
That's right. That's right.
So, I basically have to kind of, it's all the compliments of students.
Very happy. Very happy.
Thank you, guys.
Carry on great business.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for taking the time to be here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We're gonna move right on into the information portion of meeting. Superintendent updates.
You can find the history there, questions. And we do have, we went to Capital Athlete last year to house for helping the licenses. And I just signed off on the pink one this week in the color scheme. We have some people. My name is on the document. So, picking out the colors. And so, that is on the way. We are on the list. We're just waiting on PBD to approve it. So, we are about halfway ready. We're excited.
Right.
Where will that be?
Since the PBD signs.
No, where?
We will go from there.
Okay.
But we weren't even expecting until like around July.
Were you asking where?
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 Oh, where. It's gonna be placed on the west side of playground within the license complex.
Oh, okay.
So, all we need to do is, we're excited. Thank you.
And? Okay. We'll move right into director's reports and I'll open it up to questions from the board.
I have just a kind of a generic question about the maintenance and ground deal. I know we looked at handrails at the football stadium and just at the game this past weekend, there was so many people there. And is that something that we, how do we move forward with that, I guess? Or there's something we can look at? Or I know we talked about it in the facility master plan and it was doable is what it sounded like. And we can discuss later if we need to, but I just was thinking about that. Oh, I didn't turn my button on. I bet I got it.
So, we've got to come up with a design that still allows the 48 inches of pathway.
Okay.
And that's what we're doing. We're thinking about coming over the side. So, it may not be on all the stairs going up, but we'll get the majority of it.
Okay.
Is a plan so far. It's still in the process.
Did we not talk in the facility master plan and it showed them going like up the middle or?
We don't have enough room. Yeah, we don't have enough room through our aisles at this point.
Okay.
They'll have to be on the side, mounted to the side.
Appreciate it.
Other questions from the board? I had a couple of technology questions, but I'll just get with Mr. Rutledge tomorrow on that. And Dr. Parker, thank you for dropping that video. I didn't know they were gonna show it tonight. And I'm not really one to share things on social media, but I was like, "Oh, I want to share that," but I didn't know if we could. It's great. So, thank you for putting that in your report. You made reference to the flipped classrooms. How many and where do we have our flipped classrooms?
That's really exciting.
Because I would like to go see that. And I thought it was at Tater in the high school, but I wasn't sure. I mean, that was the plan. So, what do we have?
That is, that is correct. But Dr. Parker, do you want to add?
I actually have the list at my fingertips because, talk about a project that everybody was involved in. Technology helped us install the light boards that we purchased with federal funds so that the teachers can record themselves. And then Jesse had to wire the rooms and the doors so the teachers have access, only the teachers that are flipping. So, we have, do you want their names?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, we can reach out to the schools. I was just curious, like, content.
How many? Well, we have, we have CTE teachers. We have math teachers. We have science teachers. We have sped teachers.
So, at Tater Middle School, how many do we have?
We have four teachers and we have English, math, math and sped.
Okay. And then at the high school?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. All CTE, social studies, math, science, language arts.
And the feedback from this has been good so far? I think we're just nine weeks in.
We're, right. And Trey, neither one of you want to talk, speak to it?
I'm speaking a little bit.
I know the teachers are working very hard. Montana.
Is Montana still their district?
Montana is one that's doing some flipping. And so, it's, it's a process, you know, and she was talking about her next lesson because they have to plan for it and how they're going to do it. So, as far as your conversations.
Overall, I talked with Mr. Faust today. He's one of our social studies teachers. He's enjoying it. There's some modifications that's taken place, but as far as getting into the labs, creating the videos, uploading the different videos, it's been phenomenal. They've also incorporated, incorporated that in with artificial intelligence. And so, when you take your slides, which you can easily do, you can take those and put those into ChatGPT, create a transcript. From there, there's another program where you can create a video off of that. And so, then you can kind of slice it up and dice it where the AI does it. So, you have students that are watching a video over here. You've got other students. So, they're learning the need-to-know standards and you've got other students over here. They're kind of moved on so they get the nice-to-know standards. Overall, it's been good. One of the drawbacks, which we see in just about everything that we do, is student apathy, to be real honest with you. So, you still have students that just, it's really hard to get them to do anything, to be honest with you. And that's always been a challenge within the classroom. But overall, the response from the teachers has been positive in this endeavor. Now, not all of them are doing it in all of their classes. So, it wasn't a mandate where you had to do this. It was introduced to the teachers as something that if you want to learn a new way, we've really had to differentiate instruction at the secondary level because that's a little bit more difficult with 27 kids than it is with maybe 20 kids at an elementary level to where we can try this. And so, some of the teachers have taken a couple of their classes and they're really trying to flip those and kind of got the learning curve there. And then they've got the other couple of classes, the way that they've kind of done it in the past. And they're, they're trying to fill their way and it's a comfortable situation for them. I think when you have a choice to learn something new, you're more apt to want to do it. And so, that's been real positive. And I think that's why we've had a tremendous buy-in with, what was it, 18 teachers so far? And I think we've got a couple of more that are really looking at joining the movement moving forward.
I asked some of the teachers, Tammy Starkey at the middle school, how, how it was going because we did our learning walks. I reported last time that we had done the middle school on our learning walk. And we saw her classroom. It was a flipped classroom. And she said she knows her students better than she's ever known any of the others. She knows where they're at individually so quickly, doing it this way because it's given her more time in the classroom to work with the individuals and differentiate. So, so I think we're just, we're just getting started, you know? But it's exciting. And it is a, it's just a learning curve for teachers. And you're, yes, welcome to go to the high school, see the light board. Montana was talking about she's gonna be doing a seed lesson and she really wants to do it in there on the light board. It's incredible. So.
Dr. Parker, there's three stations, two at the high school.
Two at the high school and one at the middle school. The light board group.
Anything else, when they start introducing it at the middle school, students also learn how to do that.
To use it. Exactly.
You know, and I think the bottom line is we certainly want to see that needle move as far as.
And to, the fact that we had 25 teachers interested in doing this, you know, we presented it to all of the teachers, six, seven. And to, the fact that we had twenty five teachers interested in doing this, you know, we presented it to all of the teachers, six, seven and eight, and twenty five volunteers, that's incredible, who are willing to do that and, yeah. And the fact that it's across all subjects, the kids are probably gonna go to their regular classes and say, do we have a video? You know, that I cannot watch the video and then do my work in class.
I know that the athletes have really enjoyed it, from what my understanding is, so they can watch the video as they're coming back and get, and get caught back up on. So that's been a positive as well.
And we're doing it in multimodal videos, so that our L students can learn their own language, you know? And even if they're not an L, being serviced, they still have that option if they feel more comfortable, so it's awesome. Thank you. Good question, thank you. The only other thing I, well, I was gonna ask about the student intern thing, can you expand on that just a little bit? I'm sorry, but yes, I like hearing about that. So this is what Andy is working really hard, because our goal, you know, we, we hired Andy as our academic specialist last year and he was teaching part-time, which is really difficult to be out in the community and, and get those partnerships. So he goes around and if he has students who are interested, either with Work for Solutions, we have many more coming. But if there's a student who's interested in a pathway, for instance, Noel, how do you say it, Noel? The broadcast, Noel. Noel Mark? Noel Mark. Came to us and they wanted an intern, so we posted it district-wide, or excuse me. Ash Chausch was on the football game the other day. Yes, yes, and so they came to us looking for an intern. So Andy put it out to any high school student, I believe we had eleven students who applied. They were interviewed and they selected three interns. And so, yeah, she's been, she's been up there helping, she does the band and then she runs up and, and helps with the football. So that's, again, the petty group, we have some students who are doing it this summer, we have a couple of others. And so our goal is to honestly, every single student at the high school, by the time they finish, should have an opportunity to either be an intern. We're hiring them, also as student workers, we have one in maintenance, who's currently working and getting paid for it. So we have funding through the Innovation Zone Grant, where we, as a district, can hire, we, we set aside thirty six thousand dollars for students that we could pay to do internships in our district. We, we're gonna have one in culinary, we have one in maintenance, we're going to have one that works in the greenhouse. And so what Andy does is he's working with the students, going over, you know, skills they need to know before they go to work, make sure they're prepared, how you behave, what you do. And then, that's why I say we're just getting started with the placement and it will continue to grow. And some will be paid internships, the work-based learning type of opportunities. And so I really anticipate by next semester, we'll have a much longer list of students who are out getting started. But it takes these industry partners to be able to pull that off, so it's exciting. Thank you, Dr. Parker. And the only other thing I had was, I, I don't really know who to ask this. Are we, are we having some kind of shortage with paper towels and soap? I am getting many, 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 many calls and comments from teachers and parents of not, they're running out of paper towels and soap in the little grades and, I mean, Lano's like its own little Petri dish and, and it's, we need to make sure. And so I didn't know, I mean, are we running into an issue with not having them? In the classrooms, what I'm hearing is that they, they're struggling to get paper towels replaced and soap replaced and it's, it, there's, you know, they've, they've been told, this is coming from parents, you know, and I don't know, but I thought, okay, I'm getting a flashback of COVID-type stuff, but I just, I did not know what was going on, but, I mean, we just fought through, I, I know many of you already knew about the big virus that went through Lano and, and, I mean, they're three, four and five. Their hands are in every orifice of their body and then they hug their friends and their teachers and, I, I mean, they, they have to wash their hands constantly. They have wonderful staff that, that work on that, but I just didn't know where the breakdown is. Okay, I, yeah, I, I, and I didn't know if it was, I mean, I didn't know, but that's why I thought we've got to figure this out.
We just ordered sixty five thousand dollars worth of supplies.
Okay.
We got a shipment in last week, we had run out of soap and Bryson got that to the schools yesterday. So paper towels, I mean, we, we have some, I mean, we are not completely out. We asked if they'd go ahead and submit a work order and they get it, so I, I know.
So is it maybe just a systems breakdown, you know?
It could be, it will, I, I think the main thing pre-K was looking for was hand soap. And that, that came in and they didn't have any. Also, we have plenty of cases that we're fixing to deliver to the schools, elementary schools of hand sanitizer. They've been left over since we were in, in COVID and we're gonna get that out, so.
Great.
No, we, we have plenty.
Good, 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 okay, well, I just, when I heard it, I said, there may just be some misunderstanding, because I just couldn't imagine that we wouldn't be supplying that, so thank you very much.
No, thank you for asking, no, how many because?
Yeah, you don't know if you don't know, that's true. Okay, that's all I have, nobody else have anything, let's move into routine matters. We'll take items one through four as a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept items one through four as presented?
Second.
Okay, thank you, next item, budget adjustments.
There's only one budget adjustment for, and we received the ten thousand dollars for our Hispanic education mini-grants.
Any questions from the board? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the budget adjustment as presented? Donations.
So it's listed.
For the science fair?
Yes, we are so thankful to our science, uh, yeah, our first. And thank you, you're very thankful to, to be supporting that group.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept those donations as presented?
Second.
All right, moving right on in, oh, sorry, got a little anxious here, more than a thing pumped up. It's ready to go. Okay, thank you, moving right on into old business. First item is the second reading to consider approval of amended policy J sixty nine fifty, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Yes, ma'am, I am going to recommend that we leave the policy as is. And after doing a little bit more research, what I have learned from the N M A that to change these schools, so leave as is.
Okay, but we're gonna do a little bit more checking on pieces of it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so there will be no action taken on that. I suppose we need a motion to table it? Okay.
Second.
That way when Vanessa asks me, what did we do with it, we'll remember what happened. Okay, thank you, next item, second reading to consider approval of I seventy one hundred and exhibit I seventy three eighty one.
Standing question, and I have my awesome housing department back there that will be available to answer your questions.
You guys kind of knocked it out of the park last month, so. And this five-year summary, that, that's great, that's a great document, thank you. I mean, when I say great, it's disappointing, but it's great information, so thank you very much for that. Questions from the board on this? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this policy and exhibit as presented? And Dr. Parker, I want to thank you, I know you've put a lot of work into making sure this came through, so thank you very much for that. Okay, moving right on in to new business, first item, consider addition, item J J G E A as an exhibit to policy J four one six one, I feel like I'm like air truck controller or something.
Yes, ma'am, so a regulation J forty one sixty one is contest for students. And I am wanting to provide an exhibit for out-of-state travel requests, that this would be the form that everyone fills out and presents to the board so that we are uniformed and systematic.
So there's nothing changing with that J forty one sixty one, it's just you're wanting this added on?
That is correct.
Okay, questions from the board?
No, ma'am.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
And I would like to, I hope we thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Sloan for working so hard on this. And they know my love language of systematic and organized and get all the attention on it, so thank you to Trey.
Great. Okay, next item, consider adjustment to the American Tower lease.
Yes, so the American Tower now is reaching out to us, the substitutions are placed on. And they have done, they have offered some proposals for this tower that they're wanting to buy. And the information is there presented for you, and I'm sure you'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the board for comments and questions.
I guess the way I, I read this proposal is, it's, I, I guess this is my question, is this just for ten years? What happens after ten years?
It's not ours, it's done.
If we do the purchase.
If you do the.
If we do the lump sum.
Yeah, like if you do option one or option two, either one, right? It's a perpetual easement then.
Yes.
So there will be no more payments.
Either way?
And that's what I was, so I, I just ran the numbers and, and we would, if we keep it for, if you go over seventeen years, you're making almost seven hundred thousand dollars, you know? If we keep it the way it is now.
So it gets two thousand dollars added on every year?
Right.
And so we do have the option to keep it just like we have it, correct? And I, my flag went up when they're, they're wanting to buy it out, I'm thinking, okay, that's because they're figuring out it's gonna cost them more money and less money for our district. And so I guess I want to ask, what is your recommendation? And I know you and the superintendent have both talked about this, so.
We have discussed it and we both think that we should just leave it as is.
Just leave, not look at either one of those.
And I'm, I'm sure this is a form letter, but I had to laugh at, you usually love some, a mortgage, so they have to start this and this practice.
They might, might should have realized who they were sending it to, that's true. Okay, so the superintendent's recommendation on this? That we do not consider this. Okay. So the way this is written is to consider the adjustment presented. So I'll open it up for a motion.
Someone?
Wait, hold on.
Motion that we do not consider.
We, we do not, we do not consider.
Correct.
Yeah.
Can we make a motion to not?
I think.
Can we make a motion to vote it down?
Or we don't make a motion.
We don't like.
We do not make a motion, that's why I was opening up, is there a motion to look at this, consider adjustment to the lease as presented? Okay, so we're in no motion? Nice. Okay, yeah, because we couldn't do a motion to not.
I was kind of confused there.
It's high-tech for us, I mean, you know? All right, item three, consider approval for out-of-state travel for the cheer team to compete at Nationals. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
So in your packet, you have information that's the, that she's here to answer any questions.
I, I know there's probably a lot of questions, because this is kind of out of the norm for us. I wrote a little thing, a little excerpt you could call it, that I think will answer most of the questions, if you don't mind if I read that to you really quickly. And then if I have left any stone unturned, just let me know and we can obviously move forward. So Ms. Kenyonis and members of the school board, my name's Olivia Amundsen and I've been a teacher and a coach for Levington High School. I have coached for seven years now, but the last three, I've been head coach at the Levington, uh, Levington High. Next to me is one of my assistants, this is Kiara Marcus, she's a Levington Wildcat alumni. She was part of the first ever state championship with Levington Cheer. And she's a first-year coach with Levington and she's amazing. And together on, on behalf of the Levington Cheer coaching staff, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to meet with you all today, as well as the outpouring support from our Wildcat community, alumni, administration, family, and of course, you guys as well. So we know why we're here, the Levington Cheer team has an opportunity to showcase our cheer routine at the USA National Competition, which is the United Spirits Association Nationals. It's in Anaheim, California, and it's on February thirteenth through the sixteenth of twenty twenty five. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us. We know a trip of this magnitude requires a large amount of funding, organizing, and practice. However, if there's one thing we know to be true, it's that the Levington Cheer team is not afraid of hard work. I've submitted, like Ms. Kenyonis said, a schedule and itinerary for our trip. It has the, it highlights the cost of flights, hotels, transportation, meals, incidentals, all of the above, competition fees, an estimate of all other costs, and our fundraiser approval. It should have all of the information you need to consider if we are allowed to attend. But as you consider our request, please take into account the following, why USA Nationals? That answer is simple, so USA, like I said, is the United Spirits Association Company and it's under this varsity cheer umbrella, which is the biggest cheer company in the nation, I would argue the world. And the N M A A contracts with USA and U C A to provide our judges for our state competition. So it's not like we're going to some, you know, random organization. We already use them to provide, to give them our routines, if that makes sense. The USA High School Nationals rules and regulations, they directly follow the NFHS rules that we also use in Mexico. There's only two rule changes in our desired division. Athletes can step on a sign while they're stunting, but as a good coach, I'm gonna tell you, we don't do that, that's why we win. And athletes can tumble during our band chant, and as a good coach with a good team, we are happy to do so. We're gonna compete in our, our current game day routine, that scored with similar judges, as I mentioned, because they are contracted to the N M A, a ninety-three point one at the state competition. And national champions and top five teams, they consistently score in the mid to low nineties at USA Nationals since twenty twenty-two. So with similar scores that L H S has, we have a fighting chance to be top five, we have a fighting chance to be top three, but we can be number one. We will compete in three separate game day routines, and that being said, we will have an opportunity, three opportunities, to be national champions. Each routine requires a new skill set that perfectly highlights our athletes and their individual team abilities. Like I said, we performed these at the New Mexico State Cheer competition successfully, earning number six. We were here with you guys just a couple of months ago, which is awesome. As an, and an old coaching saying says it best, the hay is in the barn. And translated, that simply means the work is done. Now we just need to work on the little things and the behind-the-scenes points to get us on the USA map. USA Nationals is competitive, I want to make that clear. Teams from all over the nation come to perform, these are big categories, twelve teams in each category at least. There are no participation trophies, you don't give a lot of money to this company and they let you be a national champion. It is a national competition. It must be earned, and that's what we like to do here. It adds, to add, this competition is attainable for New Mexico Cheer, which is why we love it so much. Past attendees include Albuquerque High, they went last year, they placed third. They're a co-ed team, Hobbs has gone, they've done well, they believe they placed third. Their co-ed team, Hobbs, has gone. They've done well. They believe they placed third. U&amp;M attends annually. They are national champions for college this year. NMSU attends annually and they also get those national places in championships. The list is far greater, but I've spoken with these, the heads of these programs directly to ask for feedback and they all tell me something positive. I have a few more facts to present to you all, but this leads me into the feeling section as well, if you will. So, why 2025? I know that's a big question. In short, scheduling. Our schedule doesn't line up like this, ever. As a New Mexico spirit coach, it's important to me and my staff and our team that we maintain and we prioritize our district and state obligations first. In years past and likely in years to come, we have always had a local competition conflict with Nationals, always. And this year, our February is open. We are able to go to Anaheim and focus on the job because remember, the hay is in the barn. And if we wait to go years in the future, the funding that we secure may not even be able to take us to Nationals because it's going to be a waiting game. This idea that we have, or we're late to the game, or that we need more time, it's just simply not true. We won't be able to register next year even until September, like we did this year, which is the end of September, September 19th. You won't be able to block hotel rooms. You won't get transportation quotes, et cetera. And I know the funding seems overwhelming, but with the packages that we're able to obtain with the companies that are contracted with USA, our team is able to obtain a financially reasonable deal. And our fundraising proposal also doesn't force our Levington community to, you know, give us a lot of money. We're going to, our proposal, if you look at it, is a raffle, $20 a ticket. $20 versus, you know, a banner or something, which is 250 is a big difference. I must add, Levington Cheer does not only take from our community, we also give back. We host many community and school events, such as one of the largest youth camps for our district twice a year. We host a large annual cheer competition. We assist with pep rallies and Halloween bashes. We host bonfires. We volunteer with the Food Coalition and other organizations. And we also lift up and support every Wildcat sport and activity in our community. And we are so thankful for the community's support. We don't take it for granted. So, here's where the feelings really start and I might get emotional because Chrissy Ariola is my mentor. I'm not sure if you've ever, any of you have ever been a coach before. But I hope you can relate to me anyway. If we wait to attend, we will miss a large part of our team. I'm sorry. We will be missing a large part of our team and that's the class of 2025. Jenna, Ava, Alexis, Madison, Avery, Jada, Sawyer, Javian, and Peyton. Nine perfect humans ready to take on our set on seven goals. There is talent and then there is talent. And these athletes present a talent greater than I've ever seen. We have the most experienced co-ed athletes we have ever had. We have the most elite tumbling that also drastically falls after the senior class. We have a performance present that will put you in trance. We have the technical precision in each formation and dance that has been studied to the letter. And if we're going to attend Nationals, we need to realize that the score that helped me know that we can be compatible with other teams in our nation is a direct reflection of this senior class. They performed those routines. It's a direct reflection of that senior class, their leadership and their work ethic. And so, this idea that this can be done next year is not the case. For an example, we will only have one returning senior next year. I am not an impulsive person. Last year, we had talent, but I would have never thought about pleading with you all to go to Nationals. We simply, we weren't ready. Coaches want this, not just for our seniors, but for our entire team because we will never have this team again. We want them to know that they can and should do or try everything. They should never limit their success just because it hasn't been done before. We have broke Wildcat records in our game day scores. We have hosted the most successful cheer competition in the South last year and we will do it again. We have broke Levington High School records in the most consecutive state championships in a male, female, or co-ed sport. And in the game of winning, we can never be comfortable. So, we must push and try more every single year. And going to Nationals and being exposed to new amazing teams, to new colleges ready to add our talent to their roster, this competition kind of acts as a combine for those seniors. The colleges also perform and college coaches are in the warm-up room watching them. It adds, to add, to add a new level of cheer that is leveling up that we need to continue to make a name for ourselves right here in New Mexico. One of the choreographers that we work with closely, his name is Matt Archunde. He explained to me that we are one of the only teams he has ever worked with, with this many consecutive titles that has not gone to a national stage. That's one title I don't want to keep. So, in closing, I ask you two simple questions. The hay is in the barn, so why not now and why not Levington? That's what I kind of wanted to share with you today. I hope I answered your questions. I'm sorry for getting emotional, but if you have anything else for me, I will gladly answer.
Thank you, Ms. Amundson. I'll turn it over to board members for questions. I'm sure there are, so...
Of course, of course. Let me pull up my itinerary too, so I can...
And we have that.
Perfect.
How many total people are you looking at?
There can be 24 on the competition mat, but I think it's important that if we're in California, we have to have our alternates there too, just in case, you know? Because we can't just drive and pick them up. So, hopefully, we could, we can take as much as 30, but I, we could also take as little as 26. That also, we have to have obviously our full coaching staff there, which would be four coaches. Myself, Kiara, Michael, and then our tailor coach Catherine because she is our music coach. Because that's important.
Thirty-four people?
Thirty-four people max and then, or, you know, thirty, maybe.
What all ideas do you have in mind for us?
Well, what I think would be, for us, what makes the most sense to me. We work closely with companies and actually families that have offered for us to get like very, very nice donation items. And like a Yeti cool, two Yeti coolers. Somebody's offered to, you know, get a Plut, a Plut screen TV. Somebody had a really nice fire pit. So, selling raffle tickets and having multiple-place winners would be a nice fundraiser and it also wouldn't be like, Ms. Patty, can you give me $200? Can you give me $200? It would just be a $20 ticket. We also, a subtle brag in there, I know that's not the point of this, but we had the largest miniature camp we've ever had. We had 216 campers. So, normally, we make about $3,000 and we made almost 10. So, that cushion is also very nice for us to be able to use as well.
I think, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I think just looking at the, the history of fundraisers, I mean, we're all adults, I think, and realize that not everybody sells enough tickets or sells enough. So, what happens there? What happens if 10 of the cheerleaders don't sell their 20 or 30 raffles? I guess 20, 35 tickets. What happens then? I mean, who puts the bill? Because you can't take 16 girls or cheerleaders. Sorry, I shouldn't say girls, but 16 cheerleaders.
We would have to take the full amount. You're right.
Right.
The cushion helps with the miniature camp that I mentioned. Having those, that, those funds to fall back on would really help. We also have a, an amazing, I'm seeing, I'm bragging on myself. I'm sorry, guys. But we have an amazing cheerleading competition that we start getting vendors for and teams registering, teams registering, pre-sales for t-shirts, all of those goods for that competition that we are also prepared to put towards that cause to, again, give us that cushioning. But I understand, I understand that is a, that is a...
Yeah.
That does happen. Yes, sir. And we're trying to be as prepared as possible. We also have a really great booster club that is very financially responsible and we have a very good standing in our bank account right now that would also provide that stability for us.
So, you have the money right now to do this or you're needing to do fundraisers to do this? Because I, I think that's also a concern. I'll just be real honest. Typically, when groups come to the board asking for out-of-state travel, it is well in advance. A four-month window is, is not very much. And I think my concern is the burden it's putting on families. That, that is a huge, because as you said, because what do you have, like 75 cheerleaders or something? And you're going to, how many do you have?
We only have 39 this year.
Oh, okay. I'm probably thinking junior high.
You probably are thinking junior high yesterday.
And so, now, this is, there are no junior high cheerleaders going on this trip?
No, ma'am.
This will just be high school students?
Yes.
Okay. So, those families, do they already, I mean, because it's not something that was scheduled. I mean, the schedule back in August didn't have it. And so, I just, I keep thinking about, that's, that's a lot. I mean, pretty much you're looking at about $1,000 per cheerleader to come up with. And so, that's why I was, is, is the money already there? And the girls, the cheerleaders would raise the money to pay the booster club back? Have you already, I mean, I don't know. Have you already paid money for this?
So, if we look at the, so I put two proposals together. If we look at the charter bus, the charter bus is $20,000. So, if we did that, I believe it was almost $36,000. We don't have that. If we did the flights, which is, it was closer to $11,000, $12,000. We have money in our bank to support that, but it would take every, it would take our funding. It would be, we would have, you know, in our bylaws, it states that we must have at least $1,200 into our bank account. And so, we would not be able to, you know, like foot the bill right away. But this has also been mentioned to our cheer parents, not, like as you said, this could happen. This is a maybe thing. We want your perspective on this.
All 39, but only 30 of them are going to go.
Well, two, so we have two different teams. So, we have a varsity team. It's comprised, comprised, I'm sorry, of 24 athletes right now. Then we have the JV team that makes up the other athletes. This is, we just had our competition tryouts to, to form this national or state routine team. But we did talk to all of the varsity members and then we also mentioned to the JV members and we were very clear, like this is not, you know, this doesn't mean you're going to do it, but if you could, this is something that you would work on or would want to invest your time in because it is going to be a lot. And I didn't get one response of a no. I think that when you look at the funding, when you take a trip to Anaheim, California for four days, you're not going to get, you're not going to be able to take that trip for $800.
You're not going to get a biscuit and water.
Well, we do because of the USA, the USA meals. They give us, they give us coupons. So, it's not part of our entry fee. It's, they work with Chipotle. They work with, I don't know, Qdoba, something. I don't know how to say their name. I'm so sorry. But you don't get, you don't get to be there for $800. And so, looking at that deal and then also looking at, as I mentioned briefly, it's like a combine for our athletes. Colleges are there to scout and look at you. You get national exposure to other teams and the nation that you don't normally see. And when we look at our state competition, we compete against the same two teams. It's for second and third. It has been for three years now. Levington, Brenneal, Bloomfield, every single time. And they're, they're comfortable in that. And so, getting to expand, getting that, it's worth it to them. We also talked about, you know, or we haven't talked about it, but when our athletes approach a business or a family member for funds or anything like that, we go over pretty vigorously in our first parent meeting, how to approach a business, how to be respectful, how not to bombard people, and I think we do a really great job at that. So, I don't anticipate the flooding to be, you know, anything that is, you know, harass, harassing like, if that makes sense.
So...
And, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry to cut you off. This wasn't in the schedule because we get a, we get an email as the New Mexico Spirit coaches from Josh McCurdy and Tyler and it says, "Here are the sanctioned competitions. By the way, USA Nationals is on this date." And I got it, you know, as soon as I saw it, I was like, wait a minute, February 13th? It's not the 22nd? Because that was the proposed date. And I was like, my goodness, we have, let's try this. So, if I would have known in advance, I would have told you. But my fear is if we push this to next year, I'm, it's going to be the same thing. We're going to, you know, have this time to prepare and look at our team and all of those good things. And then we're going to be like, oh, district championships that day. We can't go anyways. So, it might be a waste. Or the flights might be too expensive or the hotels, you know, it's all, it's just so many factors.
Is there any sort of qualification to go to Nationals?
Yes. There is qualifications.
Have we qualified for that?
You have, we attend. I've been talking to, her name's Kim Foster. She's the USA lead USA rep, I would, you would call her. There is a virtual competition on January 11th that you have to qualify for. It's a regional, so USA regional competition. You just submit a video and you don't, it's not like you go to prelims and you don't make finals. They just want to make sure that you're following NFHS rules. So, the rules that we followed for, you know, as long as we've been, you know, athletes on the mat. So, that's how you qualify. There's also a USA camp that you must attend. And if it get, and if approved, we will attend that very quickly. And on the USA camp, they show us game day, their game day preferences, game day routines, co-ed stunting, how to stunt with a sign, music, because there's royalty things with cheer using people's music. They introduce us to instructors who become your liaisons at the USA Nationals so you can, you know, know where you're warming up. It's a big event center for our small-town crew.
Let me cut you off for just a second.
Yeah.
When you talk about qualifying in the camp and all of that, when I pull it up, it shows that at least 75% of the members competing at this 25 must have completed the summer camp...
Yes.
2024. And yet, I'm hearing you say, "We're going to be doing that."
The deadline for camp is November 1st. So, as long as we complete the camp November 1st with 75% attendance, we are good to go.
And where do we go to this camp?
Levington High School. We hope to, we hope to attend the camp if approved. We are in standby with USA staff for Saturday. They will come on Saturday to Levington High School and we'll have six hours of instruction where they learn all of this material. That'd be October 12th. But I have obviously not committed to that or done anything because, you know, haven't.
You're talking to the staff?
Yes, sir.
Something come to us?
They come to us.
They come to girls?
Right, they come to us. Everything we do is in-house regionals. We, like I said, we record the camp. They come to us. The only traveling we do is to them for the national competition.
And you're wanting to fly, but I noticed you put in here that you would want a school bus and you've estimated the cost of doing that.
Yes. Mr. Delacruz, Mr. Delacruz is, has done this in the past for us. We used to attend a summer camp in Ruidoso and we paid out of pocket to have a bus driver take us to Ruidoso, which is a three-hour drive and was $450 to go. And he's done that for the last two years. We didn't get to go this year because they didn't put it on, unfortunately, but that...
Would $450 cover taking a bus of cheerleaders to wherever you go?
El Paso.
El Paso and back, and then El Paso and back?
The 450 has been...
You can understand why we have a lot of questions.
No, of course, of course. Absolutely.
This is very last minute.
Yes, ma'am.
The 450 she referred to is going to Ruidoso. If we went all the way to El Paso, it would be more, a little bit more than that.
Twice?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Because this 450 was...
No.
No, that was round trip, round trip.
But we're talking two round trips, right? That we need to go pick them up when they get back? You got to take them?
We, we did that too. We took them to Ruidoso. We came back. They picked up Ruidoso and they came back.
Right.
I was just curious. I thought the diesel would cost. You really know. I, I'm looking at the form and I'm looking at all of this. I, I don't see a signature by an administrator and is an administrator scheduled to go?
I, I didn't know that that was a requirement.
I'm just thinking 30, 30 teenagers. Need I say more? I, and there's not, and things happen. And there's, and so, right now, you have not made arrangements with our athletic director or the principal for an administrator to be...
I have not. We, for every other competition we go to, even state, it's a four-hour drive. That's also 30 teenagers. It's, you know, they stay in a hotel room. They go to restaurants. They go to practice gyms, things like that. And we have two coaches attend, so we would have four. In Anaheim, I know it's like California. It's a big thing. We are in like a three-mile block, smaller than it takes the distance to go from the hotel that we normally stay at to the pit. Everything is in walking distance. Anaheim Convention Center, where the hotel is like the neighbor with Disney Hotel or something when they do the fireworks show, which is also optional. So, and then the USA provides, in their ballrooms, they provide full mat floors. So, we practice in the hotel. We don't go anywhere in California where, you know, we're all contained. If that makes sense.
So...
You're gonna go from the airport to the motel, that's it?
I'm sorry?
No, they're going to Disneyland twice and some other.
That would be totally optional. And I'm really, and if that's something that, you know, doesn't need to happen, it doesn't need to happen. We were there for the competition. We would go from the airport to the hotel, and then we would get there pretty late at night, so then we'd probably practice in the practice facility, the next morning, we head to the convention center, yes, sir.
And you've discussed this with your principal and your athletic director?
I've talked to them both about this, yes.
Other questions?
I know there's several items in here that say the booster will pay for it. Is that part of the fundraising, booster money, or is that the funding that you have now, or?
That's the, that's the, uh, funding that I was talking to you about that we have now.
Cause I know, I mean, and just looking at the schedule, there's, there's, it's a tight turnaround, right? Cause this is what, middle of February?
Yes, sir.
You come back two weeks, you got the Lee County event.
Right.
And then two weeks, you got the state event, right?
The week after they come back, they got district.
Yeah. Yeah, and so there's, that's my concern, I guess, and, and then just looking at the policy, honestly, is, um, the fourth bullet says, "Consideration shall be given in all cases to protecting students and teachers against unreasonable added work and responsibilities." To me, this seems like an unreasonable added work and responsibility. And then the last bullet, also on the funding, uh, funding for traveling expenses must be done as available before final approval. And so I don't think you have the funding right now, right? You're counting on a fundraiser, and so I'm leery, I'm leery to sign off on it for those reasons.
I respect that, I'm, I'm just gonna really quickly, uh, we're the only team, so in our New Mexico competitions, which is also very unfortunate for us in our district, we compete against ourselves until we get to state. There is no competition for us, not even a district championship. And that's probably not what you wanna hear from me coming to you, I break all these records, but that is the truth. So we would perform our game day routine and our cheer with music routine in Artesia, and we would win district and bring another title to Levington, and that is a promise. For our, for our March first competition as well, that has been, we secured the date for the event center the day after this competition. Vendors have already been set up, teams have already started registering, dance floors aren't even there, mats, like, everything is scheduled, we are ready to go, it's not like we are going to be like coming from one thing to the next, and we have to get this done and whatever. Those things are already done. I'm not, I'm not going to push my athletes to take on something that they can't handle, and I wouldn't push my, my adminis, or, sorry, my assistants to do something that they couldn't handle either. Another thing to add on that, and I hope, I, I hope I don't come across as rude, but we're six-time state champions, and that's something to brag about, but that's also something to be like, well, what else? Because we've done it, and we've done it six times, and we do it well for six years in a row. We've actually consecutively broke history in Levington. This is a business meeting for our athletes at this point. And I, I, again, I don't wanna sound rude, I don't wanna sound like this is my title, and it's, you know, I'm gonna take it, but I, I, I know we will, I know we're gonna get number seven, we'll be here again, showing you that. But at some point, we have, we have to do more. That's just the reasonable thing, every single year, we've done more, and I'm very proud of that. Our first, my first year as a head coach, we added a couple competitions to our roster because that was something that was important to me, so we could compete against other teams. Last year, we created the Lee County Spirit Classic with Hobbs, because that was something that we needed to do. This year, we wanna go to Nationals. Those added things aren't, when you, you know, approach an athlete and say, we're gonna do this, they don't automatically go. They're ready for the occasion, and if they did, ugh, like they probably would have last year, I wouldn't be here right now, I assure you for that.
I'm gonna cut you off because.
Yeah.
I think, I think the thing that I wanna be sure you understand is that anytime our students have opportunities to do something bigger, it's an exciting.
Yeah.
Opportunity for our students. Personally, the concern I have is a very short turnaround, and it's, I, I know you said it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but actually, it's an annual event, and we have, you, you guys build a great program, and you've got junior high that are coming and all of that, and so for me, the concern is, it's, it's not much turnaround time, and so I do have concerns about that. I'm gonna ask the superintendent for her feedback, if there's no other, is there anything else from board members on this?
As far as turnaround, is it, is it just the finances that you're concerned about?
I'm concerned about the hardship that it will place on students and their families with such short notice, because it does not sound like they have the money, and you said earlier, you're asking the girls, if you're chosen for the team, is this something you're going to be able to do? What cheerleader is going to say, oh, no? Because you're gonna say, well, then, I'm not gonna, I, I can't pick you. I, I mean, and it puts families, I, I think it's a very short turnaround for what we customarily do for out-of-state travel. And, and make no mistake, out-of-state travel is very different than in-state travel.
Of course.
And so I think the, the short turnaround time for families to make that adjustment, I'm thinking about everything from staffing, you guys are gonna, you know, be gone, and administration, okay, we've got this, and we've got these people gone. There's all sorts of pieces that fall into place, and when it's planned well in advance and approved, I don't think, for me, it's not that I wouldn't want our team to go to something like this, I'm struggling with understanding why it has to be this year, and I know what you said about their phenomenal, and they're very good. I've watched them, they're very good. We've had lots of really good teams, and you guys do a really good job. But I'm, I'm a little concerned of the short turnaround time in all aspects, and the fact that there's no administrator's signature on this form. And, and so then that brings a question, and, and no administrator seems to be going, and, and so those are things, solutions that can be resolved.
That's a mistake on my part, but I thought that admin signed it once it was approved. I'm so sorry about that.
And it's a new form, and so that's okay.
Okay.
So.
I just wanna, just really quickly, I can never ask to do this again if we're concerned about the short, the turnaround time, cause this will only ever be the longest amount of time we have. So if that is the main consideration, I just wanna let everybody know that we will not ever allow our kids to attend the USA Nationals if that is the concern. And if that is something that you guys have to do, I, I, I respect you and I understand. But we will nev, we are not late to the game for Nationals in this way. We won't know the dates until I did again this year, so I just wanna put that out there.
Turn around to the superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm hard-earned about it.
You have what?
I worry about.
Oh, hard-earned, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have heartburn about this. I don't feel, um, you say it could always be a quick turnaround. When the Blue Club Band goes every other year, they know, but that's only every other year, and they're unraising for that time. And when you go and look at our policy, I believe it's the only unraising. So this means, you've already done that, so this makes it a fair answer. I also, as I was looking, because I've spent a long time reading your recommendations.
Thank you.
The animated rules state that we cannot do pay-to-play.
Paid it with?
And pay-to-play.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And so in the document, there's a number where you said that athletes would have an option to pay out of pocket, and we can't do that.
Okay.
And I just, I think it's too quick, I worry about our community. Our community is so supportive of everything.
Yes.
Athletically, and that is. And this is not a competition that the cheer teams qualify to go to for Nationals. This is something that they will apply to go to Nationals. When you do the research, this is really a university competition that they invite high school athletes to a tournament. So, you know, I, I, I can't get my voice in this.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna ask, is there a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for the cheer team to compete at the upcoming Nationals? Hearing no motion, that will die, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, it's okay, you have to try everything, right?
I do, and I hope that you will consider if it's something that you feel is important to your team as you move forward, then, you know, uh, much more forethought on that as far as planning.
Right.
And thank you for being here tonight.
That's really not gonna be the case, but thank you so much. And thank you guys for letting me talk, I know we talked a long time.
That's okay.
Probably later than you want.
That's okay, thank you very much. And we still love our cheer team, so.
Well, we're still gonna be here with our blue trophy in March, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on, future business, just a couple of reminders. The annual conference is December twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth up in Albuquerque at the Embassy Suites. And then the National School Board Conference is in Georgia in April, so if you're interested in that, just to kinda put that on your, uh, calendar ahead of time. Is there anything else? Hearing nothing, do I hear a motion to adjourn?